Okay, it's 6:02 September 18th. We are having our bi-weekly select board meeting. I'd like to open the meeting. Select persons present, Chair Jeff Peters, Josh Tracy, Mike Gould. Employees present, Michelle Nichols. Public present, Kenny and Lana Bell. And I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce our hire for the town manager position, Brian Mullis. Welcome, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to item two, open session. First one is Kathy Kerwin has a premium choice broadband concern. Kathy is not with us. Do we have a her concern written out?
It's to the end pile.
I think I remember this.
I think it's in the end pile.
What's the right here?
I think there's two of them.
Gotcha, okay. You want to give the one of her? I have Nicole Martin and Dana Gray.
Well, then I don't know who Sam put, the other two. I picked up the package just like how she had it.
So just touching on it, what do you know about Michelle?
I believe this is the lady who was concerned over broadband and radio radiation. I don't know how to describe it. I guess she feels that having broadband around makes her subject to radiation. And she was wondering if we could do anything about it.
So the bottom line is?
Did you say something about two? It's a short road and there's already one other internet coming down that road.
I don't know.
Which road are you talking about?
The interstate.
So I read, I read the complaint, it was very brief, like one sentence.
Yeah, I don't remember. I remember the conversation that she had briefly in the office, but.
I want to make a motion, I want to make a motion that we table this until she comes forward with what she'd like us to do.
Okay.
Vote.
I do know that Sam called both of the people listed on the agenda and was unable to get ahold of either one of them.
So we're going to table that until we hear more from either her or anyone else. Moving on, Patty Davis. Her complaint is people that have been speeding on Townhouse Road. She wants to know if they can put a 35 mile per hour sign up.
Could I just ask?
Yeah, sure.
Hi, Lana Bell, former town manager at San Diego. We do not have an ordinance, so unfortunately, we can't enforce any type of speed limit. You put a sign up, but there are drafts that we've tried numerous over the years to get the select board to look at and bring it to town meeting. Go ahead and put a sign up, but it can't be enforced until you have an ordinance that says that we have a policy. And you only probably have one individual that is, and Mike knows who I'm talking about, that is not so nice on that road. That causes a lot of hate and discontent. So.
That's more than one shout.
So if we were to put up a 35 mile an hour sign, it's only a suggestion that cannot be enforced, is how I'm interpreting what you're saying.
Right, and there is something on the S drive where there's a draft that throughout since 2018, people have been working on. And it deals with everything from heavy weight limits on the wintertime, parking downtown, everything. And it's a matter of the board just going through it and then bringing it to the town for their approval. But until you can get enforcement on some of that stuff.
So on a dirt road, there's just no speed limit? You can go 80 or is there?
Wow. Forty-five, said to me.
Forty-five.
It's 45, so currently it's 45.
And any unmarked, I think so, longer than that.
Yeah, this is supposed to be by state different.
Right.
But you still have to enforce it.
So what we need to do if we want to make a change, we got to start with writing an ordinance to change it. What are you guys' thoughts?
That's what I'm saying, it's the only way it can be done.
So we're gonna, we're gonna make a motion to leave it as it is until such an ordinance is drafted, or if such an ordinance is drafted?
Yeah.
I make a motion, we leave it as it is until we draft such an ordinance.
Second.
Okay, these, these two. Okay, these are coming up later, okay. Okay, moving on to item three, sign them, sign, whoop.
I'm sorry, it's still open session. I didn't call the town office.
Oh, gotcha, I should have asked.
Yes, I did call the town office, though. I just, as a resident of San Diego, I just wanted to bring up some of my current concerns. Maybe it's just personal, but I was a town manager less than a year ago. You'll be their third one since I left, so good luck. I have a few concerns, and I tried to bring it up, and, and I've had a lot of people come to me, so I just wanted to bring them up. One, the balance and of the checkbook. It's always been done through Trio, and I take an insult when they say it wasn't because they were balanced until I left in August.
Okay.
Number one. Number two, the guys working on building the monument, which is wonderful, I think we should do that. However, there was a $35,000, $38,000 fund for that.
Right.
In a couple of years, there's been money taken out of it. So just please make sure that you have the money available, okay? Myself and another person in the town that has been a prior town manager, we've been more than willing to lend a hand to help with whatever we can do to make this transition. It's been a hard transition for Michelle, it's going to be hard to transition for the new town manager, and it's a hard transition for three brand new select board members. But I was with the town since 2018, left last year, under strained circumstances, and I wish I hadn't had to leave the way I did, but we know the reason as to why. But I did my town proud, and sometimes when I listen to some of the meetings, I take offense. A couple of times, my name's been brought up, a couple of times during the meeting. But I never did nothing wrong. Every audit from 2018 to 2022 came out right. So I'm just here to say, I sometimes take a little bit of offense because I love San Diego, this is my hometown. I go somewhere in the winter now, but this is my hometown.
I understand that.
Okay, so that's all I will say.
Okay, point taken. The, the second thing you referred to, the first thing was the checkbook was balanced when you left. What was the second? I didn't, I didn't get it written down, I just wanted to make notes.
It's the park in a wreck, so there's money. So when people donate money.
That was the monument law.
Monument law.
Yes.
However, monument law and the town, it was all in one, it was all in one. Because when, when someone wants to donate money, you can accept it. However, if they want to donate it to a specific cause, the town has to do it. Last few years, during the budget process, the money was taken out of that reserve account to go to paying for the park mowing and maintenance and all that, so.
You're talking the veterans park in town?
Veterans park and the monument, that money all got lumped together. So I'm just saying, please, I, I love that, and, I mean, but please just make sure that all the money's there, because like I said, it has to be directed exactly to what you want. And if it's, when the money's given to you, if it's not accepted that way and doesn't go for a public vote, then you can't do it that way. I'm just saying, make sure the money, the funds are there, available. I, like I said, I believe it's a good cause.
Near recollection was roughly 35 or 6,000 when we started.
Thirty-five, 38 or so, but I know that the budget, budgeted almost 9,000 for two years in a row, that got taken out of that fund. So that would eliminate $18,000 approximately. So you just want to make sure it's still there. Or if it got allocated, it should have been allocated there, from that account, so you want to make sure that the funds are still available.
Okay.
And the auditors should be there.
All good information.
All right.
And point taken. Okay, no more open session, we'll move on to item three, signing the minutes of the board meeting, 9/11 and 9/12. Some of you guys read them, I did as well.
They should have come by email, I hope.
Thank you, Lana, for coming in.
Yeah, have a good night, guys.
I have one over here, if that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, I, both here, 61 and 62.
Both of them, yep. And then this one, but I want to point a couple of things out on this one before, when you get to it.
Okay, and that's 63?
Okay, so go ahead.
Okay. So we've read and accepted the minutes from board meetings 9/11 and 9/12. Moving on to item four, review of the treasurer's warrants. A is payroll 61 and 62, which I have in front of me. And, and so 61 is the general payroll for the, for you and Sam.
Yes.
And this one is Sam's final paycheck, 62, for the last couple of days.
Yeah, instead of me going to come back for two days, I just lumped it all into one So now your account's payable warrant, I just want to bring to your attention that fire, tech, and safety, we've got the SCOTPAC's final bill, and we get the turnout, we get our final bill, so that's on here, along with, we have our rent checks. So I had done a check for rent, got a call from the landlord, he hadn't received the check. So we've had, there were like three other checks that didn't make it to their place. So this is going to show three checks. One of those is, never got there, it's going to be avoided. The other one is the replacement check, and the next one, because our rent is due on the end of the month, you're not going to have another meeting to be approved, that would be the October rent. So I just wanted to bring those to your attention, so that you're aware. I also have Hamlin Associates. It dawned on me just before I came up that it's almost time for them to have their payment as part of the contract to get us to December, at the end of our year. And I also have the health insurance. So Hamlin's is $1,666,66, and the health insurance is $3,235,35. These would be a separate warrant, if you're okay with me go ahead and paying these, and then you would sign the warrant the next time that we met. Or you can come into the office and sign it.
They really ought to be signed before the checks are sent though, right?
Technically, yes.
Yeah, I don't want to do technically yes, is my, my opinion.
Yep.
Certainly willing to stop and sign it, what do you guys think?
When will they be ready?
These will be ready, probably by 10 o'clock tomorrow morning.
We're going to be there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I'd like the, I'd like the Hamlin thing to go as smoothly as possible.
Right, that's why I wanted to catch up, so that we didn't wait for the next, next case cycle.
Right, and then be just over the line, I don't want to do that.
Right, and what we're going to end up doing with menu missile help is, there's going to be a transition there, so next month, we're going to get a credit, because Sam is coming off, but Brian's going on. So there'll be a, there'll be a credit thing going on.
So in this warrant is, is the air pack thing appears in here.
Yep, and the turnout here.
And the turnout.
And they were so close in price, that I actually messaged Matt.
Wow, they are.
Yeah, to make sure that I had the right bills at the right time, so.
So all the turnout gear is here?
Um, I think he said they're missing some gloves, maybe?
Yeah, that's what he said. So though this shows on our warrant, it's, we've already accepted the funds, and the funds are there, and they're allocated to cover this on this warrant.
And those accounts are set, I made a line item for those, so that we can go back and track.
Follow it back through. That's a big one.
We don't usually have them that thick, but.
No. It was just the one in there that covered all of it, right? Okay.
So all of my emails, I'm sure you're up to date on Eagle, you should have packages, I copied everything they sent me for quote, because obviously, the quote that we started with isn't what we're working with now.
Right.
Because every time we turn around, it's like, well, we should have this, or we should have this. So the two things that are holding it up is the firewall. We need to get that in place, which I didn't understand what a firewall was. It's actually a piece of equipment that goes from your mode, your outside internet line, goes through the, and then into your modem, I believe I said that right, or into your computer. That's the next piece to be done, and then they're going to try to have Brian's computer all up and set up before he gets here on the 30th.
Cool.
Then you've got the Microsoft Office 365, there's a membership to that. For each computer, there's a subs, the subs price. It's all laid out in your packets. If you have any questions, we can call Caleb tonight if you want to. He said he could answer any questions that you have.
Now, the TownCloud thing, the turnout, that's separate from them, and, and that is not going to be included in their billing, that's something totally separate.
Something totally separate, yep.
We have to do that.
Now, is the TownCloud, is that a VPN?
I don't know what that is.
Virtual private network.
I don't know. They are a company that helps design.
It's not really important.
Do websites.
Check on it when I, when I get here, it's just, basically, it would allow, you know, if you had your computer here, and this building wasn't part of it, you could go on the VPN, and everything you did would be secure, and as opposed to open to anybody that wants to look into it.
Then I think it's the VPN, because it's secure. And this website too, is also, Mike actually came and sat with me, it's going to also bring us ADA compliant, so, which I didn't know, but that was something that we needed to be doing.
Where are we at in the? Oh, we allotted 10,000 right at this special select board meeting for this.
Project.
Where are we at on that?
Come down, flip to page two, you're right here, these two lines. So you've got $24,090.83, because when you, when you reenacted the budget.
Original budget.
That we proposed, that was 15,000. And that was to buy three brand new computers, and a laptop, and get all the programs up and running. Well, because we discovered things and licenses, we added 10,000 to it, so you actually have 24,000 worth of.
So we have, we've had Eagle monthly.
We will be.
We talked originally about like 6,000 something a year, or to get all set up, right? I thought that way.
I think so.
I just want to make sure we don't get too far ahead of ourselves on stuff that hasn't been built out yet.
Yeah, exactly.
That we've already okayed, you know? By, by the looks of that, we're, we're in a really good standing.
We are.
Yeah.
So far, I've had one bill of $24,97, that was to get the domain name transferred, but I haven't heard from Caleb to know if that actually worked. He said that I was going to get an email, and I haven't got an email yet, so stating that I had transferred over. So I don't know.
It appears like we're making progress on that, though.
Right.
I've spent a whole lot of time talking to him in the last couple of days.
I mean, I understand the firewall, I guess how.
The firewall, I believe, was $2,700, I think, it's a quote from Amy, is, and you should have a packet that has all those.
Yes. Because they're, they're kind of stuck until we decide on that, right?
They are, yep.
I know it wasn't any of us.
So the TownCloud to get started is 4384. Firewall is 278601.
What was it again?
27860, uh, 61, sorry. You'll also find in your packet, the receipt from the order I did with the debit card. And Melissa had given us, excuse me, the governmental Microsoft 365, and that, according to her, was $32 a month. I don't know what, um, Eagle came up with.
Nobody probably has the original paperwork to write them on, right? What I meant now, I didn't bring mine in.
Oh, it's got to be here. I've got everything.
I may have it here. Had to graduate to a milk crate in the backseat of my truck.
Yeah, I don't know. I was like, I'm done carrying this stuff around.
And it is in the backseat of my truck, so we can find it if we need it.
Yeah, because Eagle was a lot cheaper, it was like.
I was thinking of sending something here, but, but this year, we don't have a full
I did get word from the grant people today, that they accepted that they're looking over our application.
The grant for the information?
Yep.
System?
Yep.
Good job, keep pushing.
Keep hoping. That's humorous. I'm not going to be able to put my hand right on it.
No, I'll shoot by. Just so we know where we're at.
Seems like it was $600 a month, and that was unlimited calls.
Okay. So if we do the firewall and the webpage through TownCloud, we're still under 10,000 before the end of the year.
Totally.
For everything.
Everything we've done.
Everything we're doing.
She found the quote.
9570.01.
Yeah, as I said, I don't have it.
So we're still under?
Yeah, because we got, I mean, we've only spent, she just pointed at it, and I've lost it already, but.
It's right here.
Yeah, we got 24,090.83.
So we're good.
I don't know how to word it correctly, but I'd make a nomination that we get the website going and put TownCloud in.
Because we do have to make this decision on the TownCloud piece of it.
We do, but that's not necessarily as important as getting this security system and getting all the computers up and going. And you, you also need to have the .gov in place too, and that's very cumbersome. I tried to print that off today, and that wasn't working. Right now, being so short-staffed, there's no way I'm going to get the .gov paperwork done. Somebody's going to either help me get it, get it going, because trying to keep up with the counter and just the financials, like your financial's not 100% tonight, just because you just don't have time.
So if we went through TownCloud, they would take away some of that for you?
They would, yep. They would, they would work with me. The .gov though is on us, there's paperwork and stuff that we, they require, and I can give it to you, but I just don't have time to research it and try to do it. I don't know, maybe Caleb can help us with that, if Eagle's willing to, to step up for that and help us get that piece, but it kind of, everything is coming together, it all has to come together at the same time.
Right.
And that's where I get confused, which is the part that we start with first. Firewall is definitely a plus.
So we could call Caleb and.
Yep, you can call him, he said he'd be available if you wanted to call him and talk to him.
I wonder if we should make that call tomorrow. I'm coming in at 10:00 for the building thing. I think Mike's coming, you're working tomorrow, right?
Uh, no, I, I can be there. My week's all messed up, so it's, it's okay.
Do we, do we do that at that point, make a phone call just to, to Caleb?
If you, if you want to, yeah, absolutely, I mean.
Like you said, it's all going to come together kind of at the same time, and, and there's no point in getting the cart before the horse.
Right, we got to know what needs to come together, and if Brian is available, I don't know what you're working on.
Yeah, I actually kind of turf my Newport ship tomorrow, so I can come up tomorrow morning, that'd be fine.
Because then you're going to know what's going on, this is.
Yeah, yeah, certainly. So 10 o'clock at the office?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll definitely come up for that.
Yeah, so 10 o'clock, they're going to meet with.
Campbell?
Yes, Cameron from Campbell Technologies, Environmental.
Environmental.
Yes, and they're going to go actually through the building.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to be, be present for that, that morning.
Yep, so Cameron's going to meet at our office, it was easiest way to get him there, and then he's going to follow up to this building.
Yep, I will make sure I have you.
Everything I read on the packet from, from the TownCloud thing, and everything that you've told me in your presentation, I mean, I'm leaning towards that's the route we should take.
I think so, because geez.
Just because of the compliance thing, and the things that you do, you've got backing to it that's documented.
Well, and they're going to have two administrators, because it was a fee for just one, and just do two. Well, if I'm one of them, that's fine, but then I think the town manager should also be one, because there's going to be things that he's going to want to put on, his agenda, his packet, his minutes, all that stuff comes together, and, and so it all makes sense for him to be an administrator to the, to it. And they made it look so easy.
Yeah, it's, I think that was the biggest thing, it was the ease of it, of the program.
Well, you just, you just said to us a few minutes ago, I could get this done if I had time.
Right.
And my interpretation from you is this TownCloud thing. And my interpretation from you is this TownCloud thing takes things that you're doing two and three times and, and wasting three hours a day doing. It puts it all in one spot, it's easy, it's secure, it's done.
It is, absolutely.
And it saves time.
And your agenda would be emailed to you, it would be out for the public to be able to print the, the agenda. Um, if you had minutes that needed to be done, you could proof and write, everything comes right to you as a package. And then when you agree that yes, this is what we wanna have, we publish it to the site, just one button click and it's done. So, I mean, it's, now it's chasing papers, comp, I mean, you guys, I have killed a whole forest of trees. For everything that I've, you. And some of you like that and, um, but some of you just wanna read it, you know, and I can just shoot it off that way.
I find it, I find it easier to go in and go click, click and find it than, I'm in my milk crate full of paper.
Right, exactly.
So it sounds to me like at some point, we'll have to, we'll have to make a motion to do that if that's what we're going to do. Is this the right time?
I think probably Caleb could help you with that.
Right.
As far as how does it all come together, he kept talking about having the dot gov in place. So that when you pull the email addresses, when you pull the, the web cloud, um, put it all together. It would be easier to have that in place as you're building the other stuff. So I'm not sure which cart needs to go where.
I'm not either. I guess we ask him that tomorrow.
Yep. And I can touch base with them.
Get an answer and then.
Yep, I can touch base with him in the morning, just to make sure that he's available at ten or say eleven after your tour. Um, we could do it that way, as long as everyone has time. Or do you want, or would it be easier for you beforehand?
It doesn't matter. The week's a mess up, it really don't, doesn't matter. This is one of them right off weeks.
Okay.
I know, I see you, Mr. Fishman.
Okay, so no action taken on that tonight, just, that's just discussion points at this point.
Right.
Okay. So if that's everything, we'll move to.
Oh no, I have a list.
This is, this is new business or old business?
This is stuff I've come up with, well, during the day. So, um, the lawyer concerning our domain name and our email addresses.
Okay.
She feels that it would be better for us to have our town lawyer draft a letter. Stating that she needs to give us all our information. And we're gonna terminate, um, any contract that we would have for her. I have not put her on your warrant for anything, because I didn't know what action we wanted to take. So I have not, I have not put that on there. Um, but Jen from MMA is the lady that I was speaking with. And that was her suggestion, is we get it, spend a couple hundred dollars, have a lawyer draft a letter. And request all of our information from this lady.
So currently, nobody in our town has had a face-to-face conversation with her on how to rectify this.
Nope. And.
So what is appropriate for us to do before we spend a couple hundred dollars? Is it appropriate for me to con, to contact her and go talk to her or for the new town manager when he lands? We need to, we need to do this quickly, this needs to happen.
And I think probably along with that question, Caleb can tell you what do they need or do they have everything they need? That would be the number one question I would ask Caleb.
Okay.
Depending on what he gives you for an answer, then depend on what you have.
And you're putting this list together to talk to Caleb tomorrow right now, right? So we know the questions to ask.
I can do that.
Yes. You're gonna be that person, so.
So, Mr. Lambert suggested, um, in one of our discussions over his check. Um, his check didn't get to him, it finally did eventually, but it took the long way around the room. Um, to burn the landfill, the top of the landfill. To get rid of some of the trees or bushes or branches or whatever's growing. I just said I would bring it to the board.
Don't we have vent stacks in there and stuff?
Membranes and.
There's gas coming out of them pipes.
Let's opt to not do that.
Okay.
That methane burn is rather intense.
So I did talk to Nick, who is the gentleman from DEP. And he just simply said that, um, it's possible for him to get us some money to replace those vents, any that might be broken. Um, when we're ready for him, just call him, let him know that the site's done and he'll come back up and do an inspection.
I mean, would it be easier to spray it versus burning it?
I don't know.
Don't know.
I think for what we got into it, bush hogging it once a year is good. I mean, it, it meets, from what they said, it meets their requirements. You know.
Would it just have a couple of this little stacks or something that were out of place or?
No, I, I finally found one. I walked all over it and only found one to cover and I, I can't find the, the hole that it goes into.
And there's no map of that anywhere?
Measure meter.
Well, there might be, cause I did find that blue book that said landfill. So, and I think that was put together when John Simcoe was here.
I was gonna say, how long ago was that landfill closed? That's been quite a number of years.
About each twenty.
I heard that Monk was taking over the landfill.
Now, are those, are those, are they, seem to be in a sequence or?
No, one's over here, one's over here. I mean, really, I mean, there could have been a kid go up there, grab that pipe and lug it thirty feet from where the hole really is. I, I walked a ten, fifteen foot radius just looking and couldn't find it, you know. I didn't, I wasn't gonna spend all day searching for a hole.
So at this point, there's, there's no action to be taken or?
Nope, nope, just simply just FYI, yep.
Okay.
Um, October one, I am gonna send out, and you have a list of taxpayers.
Mm-hmm, sorry.
I'm sending out thirty day, I'm gonna take your house.
Yep.
Notices. That usually kinda riles people up when I threaten to take their house. I mean, you might get calls, so that's just a FYI, cause they're not gonna like signing the green piece of paper. And once they open it, they're really not gonna like me threatening to take their house.
I'm gonna shave my head.
Some of these people, I don't know, and like, there's an air, air too, so I'm gonna have to, you know, we have to do research anyway. Um, I also wanna get Brian a phone for his desk. Well, I found the phone, brand new, out of the box, but I have no jack. Do I just call the phone company? I know it's a stupid question, but do I just call the phone?
So there's no jack in the building?
There's one that runs our internet, I think, and our phone. And it's over there behind all the eighteen, twenty boxes. And that's it, that's all I got, it's one.
Seems need to call a telephone provider and have a man.
And have a man, okay.
Town manager really ought to have a telephone on his desk.
Well, I thought so. So, I've been to the bank, I've taken down minutes. Evidently Jeff never was taken off one of the bank accounts. So now Sam and Jeff will both be off the bank accounts after tonight's minutes when Brian accepts the role. I will send down the minutes to the bank and then they'll get our sign cards ready to go. So we're only doing it in one sweep instead of two. I'm waiting for books. I've ordered you, I haven't ordered you the Robert's Rules of Order.
Probably have it at some point, but that'd be hard for us to find, I'm sure I could find it online.
We got the dumbed-down version, the Robert's Rules for Idiots or something?
I've got it in my car and I can.
That's exactly what it says too.
That's just what it says, but it's.
So I'll go ahead and, and get those.
I was gonna say, I remember a course in college where I had to spend quite a lot of time on those, so. Pretty, I, it, it's gonna be, that's gonna be a pretty easy learning curve to get back on speed with that.
Um, we did actually get a check back for, um, loss control prevention of two thousand fifty dollars. So that's going back into your insurance bill. Do you guys want anything special in your newsletter that I'm trying to put together for the public? And in one of your packets, the gentleman that we met with on Saturday has sent out a press release. So, and that's in your packets.
I, I wondered.
And in address number three.
I didn't see a link to click on, but I was very quickly going through.
There is a link.
There is a link in there.
There is a link in there.
Dying to see it.
Yeah, so I printed off whatever I could find, um, I don't remember the gentleman's name.
And I dropped the ball on his, the historic photo thing.
Oh, wow.
I didn't, I didn't, I, I followed up, but I have not been successful. Where, where else do we have any historical archive photos, old pictures of that building?
I got nothing. There's nothing in that office.
I'll chase, I'll chase Diane again one more time and see if I can, he sent me up an email.
Yep.
Just wanting to put it in the.
Well, and, and that's just it, we wanna make sure that the public realizes that number three on the referendum that's coming up on November fifth. Has to do with being able to get grant money to restore municipal buildings.
Yes.
So this is, this is why we're prompting the newsletter, which the public had said they liked before. To get the word out, they really need to come vote on this.
Right.
Cause it will open up a door for us to be able to get grant money.
That's right. So in, in that newsletter, um, I think we need to, I, I think we need to put what you and I. Saw from his presentation and, and the link so they can look, go on and look at it.
Yep.
I didn't see the link in the email, I wish I had.
It's a lighter color. It, you wouldn't notice it unless you were really poking around at it. Um, it's a light color, like a gray rather than black. So, um, and that's, that's all I have for.
So the press release has been done.
I believe so, I believe that's what that link is.
We can announce it now that, um. We've, uh, our building is, is a historical building listed on, listed as a historical site. And.
I've got the website.
National Historic Register.
So we actually met with, the guy's name is Brad Miller and he's main preservation. Um, we went through the building and spent a lot of time in there. Um, the link as far as question three, um, Culture Main Bond is what it is. WWW.CultureMain.org backslash bonds. Um, this gentleman kind of brings these historical buildings to the forefront to try to save them. And get other places involved. So we've got him who's trying to preserve the building, we have Rich Campbell from Campbell Environmental. And then we also have, we've hired an engineer, Wentworth. So we have three people, three organizations trying to help us fix and, and keep our building, is what it boils down to. So.
And the whole point in him going through it is to bring light to the building, the building's condition. And bring light to the fact that in November, when we go to the polls, question three. Um, directly relates to our building.
Do you wanna read that for the, for the, that's his message, if you wanna read that for the reporting?
Okay, this, this message from Brad Miller, mainpreservation.org. Says, thank you again for opening the town hall and taking the time to talk Saturday. At this time, all I'm hoping to get is two to three historic photos of the town hall so that we can add them to our announcement. This is not required and I recall that a member of the Historical Society was trying to retrieve photos. Um, I can always add photos later, and that's what we were talking about earlier. I wanted to forward you the best source for promoting question three in the upcoming ballot. And it's, it's a website, it's HTTPS colon backslash backslash WWW dot. CulturalMain.org backslash bonds. We are working closely with the Cultural Alliance of Maine to promote the question. And in the coming days, they'll be adding an action kit to this webpage to help communities promote how the bond would support buildings near them. That's, that's pretty much it.
So this is a state by bond issue?
It is a state bond issue and they've, they've looked at our building as an example. And they're making an announcement on our building that that's what this bond question is for, question is for, is this area. Preservation, restoration of municipal historical buildings. And we just wanted to bring light to the fact that a yes vote on question three, um, is gonna put the funding.
Benefit us directly.
It'll, it'll directly benefit us. Okay, what's the rest of your list, Michelle?
I think that's it.
You're at the end? Michelle's informational session. Okay, that was our old business, new business. I think we've pretty much covered.
I think we covered a little fall one slot there.
Um, and item eight, town manager's report. With a lack of a town manager, we got Michelle's report. Moving to item nine, road commissioner's report, Josh.
We got the culvert done and the little bit of ditching that was really filled in from that.
Silver's Mills.
On the mouth of the Silver's Mills.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I saw that today, it looks nice.
Yeah, it does look good. Uh, and just so that the people can hear, Scott's stuff still is there. And he is doing some work for Craig Burton and Chelsea Hershey, so.
They're paying him separately.
Him separately, and they even, he even finished out his day, they are working. You know, it looks like it was one job, but it was, it's two separate jobs.
Right, and we're being built just for the culvert replacement?
And I, and I got a text message from him when he was done with the culvert replacement and then they moved on so that I knew.
Right.
About the window and.
Right.
Yep.
Good.
This is one right almost near the townhouse road there, right?
It's actually close, the closest one to twenty-three.
Right when you turn on the Silver's Mills on the left.
On the left, yeah.
Yeah, I looked at the first option. Though we can't tell and I didn't look at the.
Okay, and then.
I haven't got a chance to look at that Maple Street culvert yet.
What's the name of that one?
Nicole Martin. Her complaint reads, resident lives on twelve Maple Street, has a culvert at the end of her driveway, it is in very bad shape and needs to be replaced. Email board about the issue after I got off the phone with the resident. Okay, so this is, this is the response. So you haven't looked at that one yet?
I haven't had a chance, I'm, I'll probably do it tomorrow morning. And I haven't talked to Dana on the Turner Road grading. That road, I don't think is that bad, but it, that side of town hasn't been done, we've, we've, we've talked about this before. I think we was kinda waiting for a town manager slash road commissioner, but we are getting along in the year too. I mean, we've had complaints on Rockway Mills and kinda wondering if we should just, I don't know what we have.
Might have, might have crossed my mind the other day that Rockway Mills Road makes a big grade.
Nothing, nothing off from, we'll say the west side of town, nothing off twenty-three, nothing off Silver's Mills has been done. Everything off from Downey Hill, East Sanerville has been done.
Cause we were gonna divide the grading between two contractors, if I remember correctly.
Yes, but the second contractor for that side of town was. Yes, but the second contractor for that side of town was never notified to do it.
Okay.
So.
That would explain why it didn't get done.
Right.
Are they willing to do it this late? Should we do it this late?
Oh yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm a fan of three times a year grading, if you need it, if you get a lot of, a lot of rain, I mean, other than that, it should be done twice a year, spring and fall, you know. I almost think that, almost feel like that plan, the contract says something about that, that the roads will be graded before winter.
Mm-hmm.
So it doesn't beat up on that truck so bad.
Mm-hmm. How about budget, where are we at there?
That part, it should be pretty close to.
I, I think we are getting close. We have a lot of bills coming late. That ain't, that ain't right.
What do you mean?
Because we had, I think that's just spring grading, we still have, because we had a bill come in from Lawson's, and we had, actually, no, you know what, that might be right, Chris's bill. Chris did, did this frame, and then Lawson did his. I don't, I don't, I never saw Chris's bill, so I don't know what that was.
Okay, I'll make a note to double check it tomorrow morning.
I mean, if that's really where we're at, we've, we've got plenty.
Yeah, it appears like we do.
I will double check.
So do we make a motion to have them deal grading that road?
Well, we gotta, we'd be grading Turner, Jackson.
Bean Hill.
Bean Hill.
Rockaway Mills.
Rockaway Mills, Townhouse, Grant.
We don't do any hand and call, but either way, that's, we don't do any of that road doing.
No, no, that's, I think that's technically a private road, ain't it?
I don't know.
I don't think we do anything with it. I've, I've seen the list somewhere and I can't remember.
No, what about, like, the gray road, and that, that's all been done on the East Anger side of things, right?
Yes, I, I counted that as off from.
East Anger side.
East Anger, yeah. I guess technically, it's probably closer to twenty-three, so that, I mean, that part did get done.
It did.
Yeah.
So we got the budget to do it.
Yeah. Yeah, I think just make a nomination to get it graded, and we'll, we'll figure out who can do it, and we'll just make that decision when, when we find out we can do it.
By making a motion, we, we, uh, grade the other half of town.
Second.
Well, and you're going to make that call and contact?
Yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll contact him.
Okay, we solved that problem.
Okay, so I have one other thing to bring up, um, you have been asked multiple times for the letter from Mr. Kenny's lawyer to the town.
Mm-hmm.
I've spoke to our lawyer, she said that that is fine to give out.
Mm-hmm.
But anyone who wants information needs to fill out the form that's on the website for FOAA.
Okay.
And that has to be signed and submitted before we're gonna release any information.
Okay.
So.
Now, a quick question.
Sure.
Freedom of information, usually an entity that has to provide material, you charge for that, correct?
You can, I believe.
You can, yep. I think they get two hours free, like, if I were to be there to dig out stuff, they get two hours free, and then after that, we can charge our hourly rate.
Okay.
Um, and I also believe we can charge them for copies if.
I know you can charge for copies.
Yep, so, but, um, anyone who wants information definitely needs to send the form in.
Okay.
So calling you over and over and over isn't gonna do anything, because without the form, I'm not gonna release the information.
Okay, so anybody that wants that's gotta come into the town office, fill out the form.
Yep.
Okay.
They can also download the form off the website, it's, that's where it is, and they can send it in, they can bring it in however they want to. Um, but I did get confirmation from her on that today.
Better way to log in as well, I think, let's go.
Yep.
The last meeting, I had mentioned to you that we had gotten United Planners Financial Services, and it was from Cameron Kimmel, and it was, um, for the library. Well, Cam, he came into the office. This was an investment that the library had to the tune of a hundred thousand dollars. Um, but when they, when they disbanded or closed shop, um, that money was turned over to Maine Community Foundation. So I don't know why we still get a notice, but that's what it is.
Okay.
I think that's, we do have the lawyer coming on the twenty-fifth, um, to the office, and she's asked me to get any information that I can get for her. Um, and I'm almost wondering if maybe Old Town Reports, when we were in the building.
Mm-hmm.
You pointed out a box that was all town reports.
Yep.
I wonder if that would be a good starting point. I don't know what we're gonna have for deeds that far back.
Mm-hmm.
Which should have to go to the registry, because I don't know how far back they've scanned and done their deeds that you can look online.
Mm-hmm.
So, but I would think that you, in the town reports, it'd have to go out to, for the public, so I would think it would be in there? I don't know, I'm guessing.
I would think what she's looking for would be in there.
Okay, so maybe we can get that box and get that over to the office.
Just so that, anything we can do to save.
Her.
Her by the hour.
Right.
This is on the salt side of your relationship?
Yes.
She must have quite a stack of stuff just from Bruce.
I would think so, and she also said it would be great if Bruce was there. So, and she said ten thirty, eleven o'clock is roughly when she's gonna be there, so.
Bruce was in dentist, they all have, I figured, I don't know.
Just anything we can provide for the, you know, if he's got documentation for stuff that she doesn't, doesn't have to go dig up.
Well, and if you can think of anything for, you know, I don't have a whole lot of background of the town, but the town reports sounded, sounded right.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know about the books down in the, in the basement of the Old Town Office. I don't know what's down there for books, I mean, we saw them all, but I don't know what's in them.
Are all our roads deeded?
I do have a big container of deeds in the, in the office, I've never been through it, but.
Because when you gave me that stuff on the line road, it went all the way back to like, must have been when the town was started. Every road, name change, issue, new road, get rid of old roads, was all listed right out.
Okay, I have that.
In that.
In, in that, um, pack, it was a bunch, like, it was two-sided?
Yep.
Okay, I have that in the office, that's behind my desk, but.
Because I know, and some of the roads, it's stated in that, we, we, I mean, however you wanna put it, we're, we're not gonna use it anymore, and we're gonna give it back to the landowners, and then a bunch of the roads were just, were just ceasing using it, you know, but it never said to give back to landowners or anything, not in, as far as what the town voted on.
Mm-hmm.
You know.
So, okay, so I think that's it now. I don't think I have anything else.
Okay, any other slot board concerns, anything that? Okay, we'll move on to item eleven. Item eleven is executive session. It is one MRSA forty-five subsection six dash A, and it is personnel. It is seven oh two. I make a motion, we go to executive session.
Second.
It's a vote. Executive session begins now.